So no voting will be taken. If you'll please rise and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its infinite justice and
The issue tonight will be Arts in the Park Improvement Project. And so we have some people here, well Tracy's here too now, so. So Eddie Eastus, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you Mayor, Commissioners. Yes, we do have several that will come up and speak tonight. I just want to introduce the topic. In the fall of 2018, Mr. Phil Howe contacted Parks and Recreation about improvements to the seating in the Arts in the Park. You all have been there at different times. You're aware of the wood benches that we have as well as the other stadium seating that's further back. And he wanted to talk with us about potentially improving that seating. We've met with Mr. Howe on several different occasions as well as with Tracy. We're very supportive. When I say we, city staff are very supportive of the project, but I want to make sure that you do understand, we do have concerns. We all know those parking in City Park, just the traffic congestion in City Park, pedestrian access to Arts in the Park area. Those are things that I think we need to be aware of as we work through some improvement scenarios. Mr. Howe secured Tracy Anderson with Anderson Night Architects to develop some conceptuals for everybody to look at. He's presented that to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. He's presented that information to the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board. Both those boards have expressed support, you know, for the project. Tracy's here. He'll walk through this presentation. Alfonso and Wyatt, lots of work with City Park Master Plan are here and can answer regards to that and how the two match up. And Mr. Klemak, our Park and Rec Advisory Board Chair, is here also and can certainly talk about fundraising aspects, just coming off a very successful project over with Johnny Caw. So with that, Tracy will stand aside and we'll go from there.
Okay, so I'll just keep going from where Eddie left off. There was a competition held at the Architecture Department last night. Now I'm on, okay. There was a, Phil sponsored a competition in the K-State Architecture Department over the intercession last year of Christmas break. And there were several of us jurors that got together and were the ones who selected the winners and he gave his money to those winners. But out of that came some ideas and so from that, we tried to capture some of the things that people keyed in on that were the things that they liked. And obviously budget was a big one. How do we make something that meets what the needs are but also falls within a reasonable budget? So, and I, I'll go through this. This is just an overhead view of City Park and that area outlined in orange is the area we're really kind of concentrating on. It's a little bit of the area surrounding the venue itself, which you'll see. And that plays into the Parks Master Plan that, I'm assuming it was this commission that adopted that a couple of years ago. But, so you've seen this before, but just as a refresher, this was kind of the idea. And one of the main goals of this is to cut off this drive right here and create a new entrance to the park and this venue off of this road right here. And I can't remember the cross intersection. Osage. So this is 11th Street and that would be Osage. So that would be a new entrance into this parking area in front of the venue here. So, and then having one-way flow out and about. So this would all be one-way traffic going into the park and then coming back out, the way it's presented in the master plan. So this is an overhead view of the improvements. You can see the existing bandshell roof right here, the pavilion roof right here. There is this existing space in between them. And then this is really the new improvement area right here from a basic project approach. And that would be a new seating, raised and sloped seating area in this zone right here. Still a flat area out in front of the stage so that we still have the ability for people to either sit, dance, whatever, up in that area. And then a plaza area out in front of it. And you can see how it impacts what's currently there. Here's the road that comes in right now and curves around down to this parking lot down here. There is no pass-through right here, but you can as a pedestrian, but you can vehiculally get through in that spot right there. That's where that little bridge is. And the drainage way that goes through there. This also shows that we have the ability to put a couple of restrooms and storage pieces as a part of this. The idea being that we would add maybe four family-style restrooms. So similar to what's at the pool pavilion, what's at the playground there. And then some major signage element here and maybe even a landscape bed that's on center axis with the rest of the facility. Total seating, fixed seating in here is 989. And then we have some terraced, what we're calling lawn seating, but would most likely be artificial turf. So something that's easier to maintain. And in that area there, those two green areas there, we would have approximately 284. My guess is it's more than that. We used a factor of 15 square feet per person, which is probably almost double. So I would say you could get substantially more than that, but just to be on the safe side from a calculation standpoint.
But they would not be fixed seating?
That would not be fixed seating.
Where you could take your lawn chair?
You could bring your lawn chair, a blanket, whatever you wanted to do. And that's what that area is. So, yeah. So the, just a, well, that'll be better to show you this in a sectional view. This is a, tried to do an overlay where you could maybe get a better sense of the impact, but you can kind of see here, those right there are the fixed wooden seats that are currently there. And then, it's hard to see on this admittedly, but these sort of darker spots here are the aluminum bleachers that are currently there. So we're really, from a seating standpoint, taking up almost an identical footprint as to what's there now. It's the plaza area that really extends out beyond what's currently there. We were asked to take that concept just sort of through the next logical iteration of, well, if we did this, but didn't think about the true layout of parking and drives and all that, would it make sense? And so the next step just shows, how would that access actually, or how could it possibly occur? And we did this trying to follow the Parks Master Plan as closely as we could. And so again, you'd have access here straight across from Osage and this would be one-way in. So you have some angled parking. This is the roundhouse that's up there, just for reference. Angled parking, you would be able to come in, have two-sided angled parking. But this is a drop-off zone right here so that buses could pull in or cars or whatever, pull in, drop off, and still allow traffic to get around, but then come and park along here. Or if you wanted to try to get closer parking, come along the drive and park out in front of the plaza area. And then this would also be your exit path on out and have possibly a three-lane turn, a left turn only, a straight across and a right turn only out of the park. For scale, we're showing, these four orange rectangles on here are food trucks. So that gives you a little sense of scale that we could have, you know, we could program that space and have events there. What am I forgetting? Oh, this element here. So this green drive here and this area here follows the master plan to a certain degree. The master plan shows a pavilion patio out here. And that has to do with the ability of renting the facility and being able to serve or have alcohol at the facility, inside or out. And so the plaza is meant to be a space that is sectioned off, whether through a seat wall or some sort of fencing or gate that allows you to have alcohol out there, but not necessarily be on the grounds of City Park, I guess is how that works. The idea is this, this is also the staging area for buses or whatever. When bands come, they need a place to park their bus or their tour bus or whatever it is, or their equipment. And there's really no good spot for them to do that. I think they do it right out here currently. But this would be a place, since we don't have a lot of backspace for them to stage in, they could pull their bus down here and unload into the pavilion or the backstage part there. And so this pavilion would be designed to allow for that traffic, that heavy of a load to come across it.
How would they get out?
They'd go straight out. So the idea is that they could back in or pull in, but then they would also just back or pull straight out. So it takes somebody with a little bit of talent to do that, obviously.
Not enough of them.
Not me.
What are grass pavers?
Grass pavers are a, it's a product that's meant to be put into the grass. It's not, so instead of creating another driveway there, it's a concrete product that's put into the grass, but grass can grow in and around the product. So it still looks like a lawn pretty much any day, but it's made in such a way that it can handle heavy loads without creating ruts and things like that in the grass or in the lawn.
Do we have any examples anywhere here?
I don't know if we have any around town, but I can certainly find examples if we need to. Yeah. I can't think of any around town, but I, Wyatt may be aware of some, I'm not sure. Is there some on campus? Okay. For fire access, probably.
I can't hear.
Yeah, it's a product that's commonly used in fire access lanes. If they don't want to pave a roadway and make it look like a roadway, but it would still accommodate those heavy occasional uses.
And if it would handle a fire engine, it would handle anything we wanted. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that, Wyatt.
A couple of concerns and what we've noted here is the idea of being able to do some sort of security measure that if you rented the facility out, and I don't mean high security, but just a way to sort of limit access to, if you were renting the facility and you wanted people to go through a certain location and make sure that I didn't wander into your event, even because I don't have a ticket or whatever, that we have the ability, whether through permanent means or temporary means, whether that means temporary fence sections or bollards that then have chains or something put across. But some sort of way to be able to secure that to a certain level for people who want to rent the facility and sort of limit access during their event. So that's the idea. That's why we mentioned security bollards up here and we have those on both sides. We also, obviously, some lighting, some pedestrian lighting and lighted bollards or something out here would be necessary as well as lighting to, for parking and for when an event is over, we can ramp some lights up and help people get out of there quicker and safer. So some of that stuff has been thought of and considered. This is a section through it. So this is the current stage and the pavilion or the bandshell roof up here. So we have the flat area where it currently is, but then the seating starts about 30 inches above grade and slopes up to a high spot of about seven feet at the very back. So it's, and it's a pretty gentle slope across there. That's something that if the project moves forward, we'll fine-tune that and figure out what the exact right spot is. But we were trying to keep it from being a, technically by the code, we were trying to keep it from being a ramp. So it's a little bit less than what a ramp would be called out as in the code. So you can see that this is where the stairs would be on the backside and then the plaza area out front. And then these are just a couple of renderings that showing, you know, that you've got the stairs going up, the signage element, the plaza area. This, it's kind of cut off here, but you know, the restroom and storage pieces that would flank both sides. And then a image from inside showing the stage, the raised area, the fixed seats, the shade structures at the back, the new light and audio booth. And you can see the size. You can kind of get a sense of what the terraced part looks like. So those would be short walls, maybe 18, 20 inches tall and then relatively flat, and then another short wall to give us some, if you're going to bring your lawn chair out, it'd be kind of awkward to sit at a slant. So that's why those are a little bit more level. I think that's it for that presentation.
Where is the, is the handicapped or disabled seating assumed to be down front and therefore there's no need to access the elevated?
Well, they can. We do have ramps at the low end that would allow people in a wheelchair or some mobility device to get up to this elevated area. And we could create, would have to create certain spots for them to be able to sit next to a companion. So leaving a seating spot out or something. But also just easy access so they could really, you know, access about anywhere, because again, it's not super steep.
I just didn't see it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but yeah, both of these on the corner, I didn't mention them. Those are both ADA ramps that would get somebody up to that level.
So where are the areas where you said would be concrete and then grass would be over it?
Well, so everything in white here would be paved and all of this green, that green and this green would be artificial turf or something.
Artificial turf, not the, not concrete and grass on top. I was just thinking when people sit on the green area right now, it's dirt, but it's cooler when they're sitting on their towel or blanket or whatever it is, unless they bring a chair. And I just wanted to make sure it's still like that when they sit there.
That was a point that, I think it was maybe Wyatt brought up when we were discussing this, that there's different types of turf. Some of them are cooler or something, then some get really hot. So we would need to explore exactly what, which one to use and then how to create the base for it so that we don't get that effect.
And then that heat spreads, making that area even hotter. If it's on a July or an August, it'll make it even hotter than what it is. And sometimes that's why people that are at the pool come with their towels and sit on this cool grass. So I think that's something, yeah, we should look into.
So we would plan to retain the trees that provide shade to, existing trees, I guess?
Yeah, there's
I don't know what I'm asking either.
There's, there's, these trees along here that do provide shade. So north is straight up on the image, west is straight to the left. The building is at a little bit of an angle. There are these trees that do provide shade in the afternoon, but if you're talking 3 o'clock in the afternoon, 2 o'clock in the middle of summer, the sun is here and it's bearing down. Unless we cover the whole thing, it's going to be tough to mitigate that. Yeah, yeah. But these two circles here represent two trees that, you know, in the beginning, if we do this and depending on how it might be phased, do we save those trees as long as we can until the road or whatever the, you know, the ultimate end goal of the project is, would require them to be removed? That's something we'd have to discuss and determine, but anytime you start paving around trees, you have an impact on them, on their lifespan.
There's a picture in here with a roof, but that isn't what you're planning.
Was it in this presentation?
You're not plan, just clarify, you're not planning a roof over the seating area?
No, no.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
We started out there a long time ago and that pretty quickly went away just because of cost. Yeah.
I understand. Thank you.
I think, I think the project itself is really nice and we often go and enjoy the art shows that are down there, music shows and events. But I really want to keep it as green as possible at the same time. If it's Arts in the Park, one of the reasons we go there because of the intimacy of it being a park and being as green as possible. If we can add maybe shrubs or trees or whatever else it is. And when we look at, if we're going to look at artificial turf, I'm kind of hesitant towards that mainly because of the heat, but also because it's artificial. If we can keep it as natural as possible, that would be critical too. I think it's good to have more seating and I think people like that, one of the beautiful things about a community like Manhattan is, is that home community feeling. And we want to keep that there. So the more green we keep it, the better it would be, I think.
I would agree.
You know, the, as we went through these iterations, what you find is that after about 6 o'clock in the afternoon, those, because of the direction of the sun in the summertime, you get a pretty good shade from those existing trees. So that's one of the reasons the overhead went away. That and cost. And then, you know, when you look at grass versus artificial turf, and there's a lot of innovation in artificial turf today, but in order to keep that turf viable, you'd have to have it irrigated and then mowed. Because of the way that's constructed, I mean, that means somebody with a hand mower out there doing that all the time. So maintenance-wise, that's why we were looking at the artificial turf. If, can you go back to the, the one that shows the parking lot on there, Tracy?
That one?
So, a couple of things there. Can you characterize kind of how much more concrete space this is than the existing? And it's wide in front of the pavilion now, but that appears to go out another 30, 40 feet or so, right?
Let's see. So here's what's there now, out to the edge of the road there. So yeah, it looks like it extends a little bit beyond that edge right now.
And then, remind me of how much seating. You said we have 989 planned and just the fixed seating, but how many folks do we accommodate now on that flat spot and then?
I think the number is right at about 1,000 in what's out there now.
Because we were trying to kind of keep the same size when we started this. And then Eddie, are you going to kind of walk through the, the funding part? Because this is a little bit different than, you know, on Johnny Caw, we had this $100,000 piece that we were trying to make sure that everything else was in-kind above the, or above the $100,000. Are you going to do that, Ed? Or?
I'll jump in.
Yeah.
You know, the, the funding of this one is, we're talking a million dollars or slightly above. So we're going to have to take a little different model than a, like a Johnny Caw where we had about a $300,000 project and really only dollar cash expenses for that project was less than $100,000. And so, as we call, so this one is a much larger magnitude of that. It will be a grassroots effort. It's planned to be that way. I think we have the base financially in place now. And I think we have the means to get to that level. So we're going to try to keep it at a grassroots, community-type project. After all, that's what, I mean, that's what Arts in the Park is. It's a community.
And in this model, I think we have to have a general contractor without question, right, to interact with the city?
My, my closing slide speaks of that a little bit. I just wanted to make sure, yes, it's a substantial project. And we've had great private fundraising projects that have occurred in this building. And interestingly, over at Arts in the Park, the pavilion was originally about a $600,000 project, but private funding brought that up to more than a million-dollar project. The stage itself was a substantial project when you were on, I believe, on the commission at that time that supported that project as well. But something of this size, I really would envision, based on tonight's comments, tonight's input, you know, Tracy is going to, you know, have to progress towards a little bit more of a final concept. It's still going to be a concept, but would allow a fundraising effort, a tool to be able to use in their fundraising. Once fundraising and cost estimates were getting aligned, I really would envision city staff would come back to the commission to request authorization for some type of RFQ process, maybe for design-build process, which I'm in favor of because we get to see a really accurate price and a cost of a project before we enter into design and construction. This is a substantial project potentially. And I, again, I want to reiterate traffic congestion. We need to think about that with this project. Right now, as Tracy was indicating, bands come in and unload and prepare in the same locations where our ADA access is. We're all, you all have been there. You know, we all know, you know, some of the issues that are there. So we really need to think of this holistically and see what we can accomplish. But I, we do need to follow and make sure that we are in a city process. Johnny Caw was a great project and had a lot of in-kind, but it was a little smaller project and it was a little easier to accomplish that. There still potentially could be some in-kind opportunities. They just need to work themselves into a city process. Yes, a general contractor. And again, I'm in favor of the design-build process. So we have a known, understood and agreed-upon number before we go to final design and actual construction. That helps that fundraising effort as well.
While you're up there, can you remind me, when you come in off Fremont and you go over where the Parks offices used to be, is that road, will that road remain open too?
The master plan sees that going away and that area returned to green space.
So the buildings would be demolished up there?
Well, we're utilizing it pretty heavily right now as we're losing the community house. So as we continue to look at new facilities for Parks and Recreation, that all plays into what and when we would get rid of the facility.
But I mean, you need access, obviously, of the Fremont to get there. Yeah, I'm just, when you kind of scroll north of this proposed parking lot, under the concept now, it wouldn't connect anything, right, to the north of Fremont. So you'd come in off of 11th Street.
Through, I don't know, through the master plan process, through traffic analysis, I believe it was really a recommended. These guys are a lot better.
Yeah, for the, throughout the master plan process, and in talking with the city engineer, Brian Johnson, going in with a one-way was going to be something a lot more feasible in this area. But in taking out this road here, we would still have access to the roundhouse and the old offices. There would be parking there. So it wouldn't, and the master plan saw this, saw those two buildings staying as well. So we wouldn't plan on taking them out.
So you just come in off 11th and kind of turn north and then have the parking area still in front?
Yeah, correct, correct. And part of the, also throughout the Aggieville master planning, we were looking at some of the, the traffic counts that were here as well. And really, this, this intersection doesn't get a whole And really, this intersection doesn't get a whole lot of traffic according to those counts, and so we're kind of going off of that data as well. And, yeah.
Right now, would you say that a lot of the Arts in the Park parking comes from that northern area right off Fremont, the one that's kind of in the middle of the park? That where many people park, or does it?
So a lot of, currently, when Arts in the Park is going on, I mean, people park everywhere. I know it was one of the bigger concerns from people was just accessibility. And, I mean, just depending on really the weather, you know, how much people are going to attend that, the Arts in the Park. But for the most part, the north half, maybe even the pool, will get filled up with people.
I think I would like to see the plans as we go forward. Certainly, I'm in favor of this concept, especially because of the private funding and the fundraising that's going to go towards it. I think the materials being used will always be a huge topic for conversation, and the placement. Is drainage an issue anywhere in those areas? And how would you address all of this?
Yes.
I'm sure that's going to be part of the planning process, because I think that's, yeah.
And these guys can cover. We're looking at replacing the sidewalk along 11th Street. We hope to do that next summer. Part of that is also going to address that entranceway on the east side of Park, and hopefully we can correct some of the drainage issue that is there today. Unfortunately, the park's very flat, and it's a drainage area for quite a substantial area. So we're always going to battle that.
So would something like that fall on the city to pick that up as far as an expense, or does that go into the financing as the project itself?
We anticipate starting some improvements with that sidewalk widening. And what we, if we have enough funding, we do want to come in and rework that intersection a little bit so we can address some of that drainage. Any other future improvements are going to have to work themselves over there as well with the drainage improvements. But obviously, if we're talking about substantial concrete coming in, when I say substantial, just because of additional roadway and parking, that drainage is going to have to be a part of that.
And that's one of the things. I think as we look at the designs and things, not only the drainage, but because of the concrete that's going to be involved, I am worried about the green space in some of those parking areas.
Again, the ultimate master plan takes out quite a bit of concrete as well. So there's some trade-off. It's just the timing of when those would occur.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that, you know, we're thinking about this. I think it's good for that area. A lot of people love Arts in the Park. Every one I've gone to has been packed, and the kids love it, and it's fun to see them dancing in the front, and it's something that we take a lot of pride in, and it's about time it had some improvements. And I'm glad there's a community member stepping up to that.
I'd just like to address one other point, but, you know, the city park is our crown jewel. And so the things that happen in this park are very community-oriented. Arts in the Park is the best, one of the best examples we have. The community comes together at Arts in the Park, and if we can make that a better setting for people, then I think we've done a real service to the community. I want to introduce one other element, too, to this, not just the construction side, but we need to look at enhancing the entertainment that comes to Arts in the Park. If we can get this job done, and we can enhance this whole Arts in the Park area, and by the way, we're very lucky that the staging is in a great, in great shape. That was a grassroots fundraiser, and the city's kept that up, maintained it. And so we don't have to do any work on the staging. It's already there and performing well. But what we need to look at is, what kind of entertainment can we bring in? And we had a discussion about that this afternoon with some folks in Kansas City and the venues they have in Kansas City that bring in talent. And not, we're not talking like the big one in Swope Park. We're not talking that, but there's smaller venues in Kansas City and parks. And the discussion was talking about, there's all kinds of local talent that plays at these local venues in Kansas City, and it's pretty good. And the thought was, they would come to Manhattan, and they would come at minimal cost to us. So we might be able to enhance in the number of shows that we have each summer, starting in May and going through August, and having one or two every week. And not necessarily headliners, that's not what this is all about, and we've got seating for 900 and some people. So we're not looking at headliners, but just good community entertainment, good family entertainment. And that could be singers, but it could be stage shows, you name it. It could be all kinds of things. So I think we ought to look at the potential for forming a Friends of Arts in the Park and have that as a self-funding entertainment fund, so that we knew we, every year, will have X dollars that we can attract some of these different kinds of entertainment to the Arts in the Park stage. Still, I know the city funds it to the tune of...
Forty-five, fifty thousand.
Forty-five, fifty. And if we can double that, or even, you know, get it up to 100,000, we could bring in some really nice talent and have that as a community fund, and have it keep an endowed fund that it would keep going into many years in the future. So keep that in mind. I think I'd like to see this project certainly go ahead, but let's think about the entertainment part of it and what we can bring to Manhattan as well. Local entertainment, entertainment from Kansas City, wherever it might want to be. So I just wanted to throw that part in, too, as we imagine what can happen.
Eddie, have we ever thought about kind of piggybacking on what Eddie, Ed was saying, Eddie? But the Manhattan Art Center, they do a lot of activities. They're always looking for bigger spaces. We have a bigger space. Some, they don't bring in as big talent because of their space. I don't know if that's a partnership we can look into, but we're talking about a Friends for Arts in the Park or something of that sort. I don't know if that's already been considered and if we've done that in the past, but...
Well, outdoor venues certainly take a lot of creativity. When I was first here 15 years ago, I remember, and city manager, Mr. Fear, probably remembers this as well, we had Chantonnale, which was a substantial band at that time. They were 14, $15,000, and we got rained out. We paid them $15,000 to drive to town. So always want to be careful. I don't disagree with Mr. Klimak. I think he's right. There's a lot of opportunities for a wide variety. Some of our most popular haven't been musical. They've been entertainment and draws the kids in. So it is a unique location. People look forward to Arts in the Park every year. We get thousands of people to attend. It is very special for the community. It is something we need to continue to look at to improve and support. So I appreciate the group coming forward, spurring some creative thought as to how can we enhance? How can we continue to attract people to town? Some of our acts do that. Some of our acts I see in surrounding communities where it might cost $10 or $15 to attend. Arts in the Park is very popular. It's something for the community to be proud of. And I don't know how many years ago it was even created, but it's been here for a long time. So I'm very proud of it. So next steps, really, from input tonight, Tracy, I would guess we're going to progress to a little bit more design and just some cost.
Yeah, I did receive, right, so we have been working with PHS Construction for estimating on the project as you see it now. And I just received their updated number before I got here, set of numbers. They've been quoting it as sort of a base, and then several alternates, you know, like the bathrooms being an alternate or something like that. Just trying to do quick math in my head, looking at that when I was sitting there, I think we're somewhere around 1.5, 1.6, sort of all-in, but I don't believe that includes the parking lots and roads. So yeah, there's a little bit more sort of honing in to find out exactly where we're at. And obviously, getting with Phil and seeing to what level do we want to take this at this point in time, so...
I would anticipate we'll continue to work with the fundraising group, with Tracy, to get to a little more final, it's still a conceptual design at this point, with some cost implications. We can bring that information back to you in some fashion, but we're looking for tonight to support for this to continue moving forward or not. I don't think any of the group wants to continue moving forward if there's not support for some type of improvement to occur. So we're looking for that tonight, and again, we can bring back to you at any time, at any type, as we continue to move forward with what a concept could look like, and again, look for that support and input.
Yeah, I know, you know, I first read about this, I really don't have a problem with improving the seating, but this thing seems to have a huge footprint, especially with that plaza there. It's going to take out trees and stuff, and I'm not real enthralled with the expansion of it, because it seems to go out a little bit, a little bit way past where the seating is, especially if you put that plaza in there and then you put a giant parking lot, you know, there. And as part of the master plan for the park, we talked about not adding, you know, more parking. So I think that should be relooked a little bit, but the seating, I think, you know, that's fine. Adding restrooms, you know, that's fine, too. But it just, I think we're going to get rid of all the trees, it looks like, that are in the backside of that today. And that I don't think's a benefit.
A plaza can have a tree. So, well, you know. I am supportive. I think that Arts in the Park needs freshening, and I'm so pleased that there's someone interested in initiating a fundraising project like this. And that makes it, takes it, you know, the total burden off of the city, and much as these other projects have come forth with interest from individuals to spur them on and encourage them, and we have had some wonderful projects. This is a big one, and I'm not excited about additional parking in city park, I think, if you know anything about me, since I've been on the commission. That's been a kind of a theme. Sorry, Wyatt. But I am interested in this project as the, the rest of the project becomes a lot bigger, as Lynn said, in the scope, and the cost. So I don't know what's ahead for the city budget either, and with regard to this, it seems to me it could grow. The responsibility, the city's part can be stressed, can be stretched with regard to what, it's not on our, it's not really on our plan. And so I've got some more questions, but they're, you know, they're not big ones, and I'm more interested in seeing this additional concept plan that you're working on with more detail, but I like the amenities for the public, and that's what this represents to me, is that our community can come forward and enjoy this as a facility that enables their attendance, participation, whatever. I like the idea of expanding the, enhancing the programming, Ed. I think that's something we ought to be working on, too, and that's hard to do with the city budget. And so certainly, the Friends of becomes something that I'd be interested in having go forward. So I think that's about all I need to speak to tonight, but...
Yeah, I want to mention, you know, the funding, you know, I always like it when we can get something done, you know, privately and it doesn't involve tax dollars, but I'm still not impressed with what happened with the stage in City Hall here, because that was going to be funded, you know, privately, but I think the city ended up putting in about half a million dollars in that, if my memory serves me correct. And I don't want to see that happen with this, where all of a sudden, you know, the city's picking up parking lots and things of that nature. And so that's just a word of caution on that.
I think, you know, we've already seen it double from 1 million to 2 million or 2.5, just within the conversations. So typically, that happens with these projects as more things come about. So I think we really need to be specific on exactly what we want within a certain price range. As much as the community is willing to fund all of that, there comes a time, maybe it's overwhelming, and we end up picking up some of that tab, so I just want us to be careful. I do think drainage issues are always a big problem when I go in those areas, and those need to be addressed, and sometimes those are the costliest pieces. So just caution as we move forward, but I like the discussion, and I'm looking forward to seeing more plans as we look at it.
I think we started off with iteration one, when we had some overhead cover, it was around $3 million, then we brought it down to 1. So with the amenities like the latrines and so on, it's 1.5. So, you know, we also have to look at this, I think, a little bit more holistically. One of the, one of the things that many have suggested from up here is that we need to clear out that parking lot from whether it's KSU students or whatever it is. So we also need to make sure that we have access, which means, how far do you want people to walk to come to Arts in the Park and those kind of things? So you have parking along the west side of the park. Arguably, you can park on the street on Fremont. You have some parking that can be gained along Points Avenue. Probably not too much along 11th, if you're going to have that be an access point for the park. So particularly those with handicap, I mean, you can, I guess you can drive in and drop people off, but you've got to have some kind of compromise so you can get to the venue. Otherwise, you know, people will start complaining about how hard it is to get there. And if memory serves, if you look to the northwest where that pavilion is, that area gets, except for Juneteenth and those kind of things, when you have some tents in there, it gets almost no use. So, I mean, I think this is a great idea. I think as Ed pointed out, if you look about the things that we're trying to do here, not only enhance this for the citizens of Manhattan, but also to make this a venue where people who come to town, they see Johnny Caw, they see the things that were done down on Blue Earth Plaza, this is just another venue that make Manhattan a great place. So there's all kinds of opportunities here. All right, well, at this point, let's ask for any public comment, anyone wishing to comment on this project and concept, please come forward. Love to hear from anybody, except city staff. All right, seeing that, any further discussion to be had, or we, okay. You got everything you need, Eddie?
I believe so, and what we'll plan for is continued refinement, working on concepts a little bit more, and we'll bring these back in some fashion to the government body to look at again. Appreciate the input.
All right, well, that's it. Let the record reflect at 6:20.
That's a record.